Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll call the order of the February 19, 2025 regular city council meeting at 6:00 p.m. Roll call. I know Rich Olson called me tonight and said he was not feeling well, so he was not going to come to the meeting. Everyone else is present? Please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item four, consideration of the agenda. Do we have any revisions proposed or any changes to that?
No, we don't.
All right. You have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some would.
If you're in favor, I can say that.
Sir.
Chris, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Second, or item five is consideration of consent agenda. That's items A through E, meeting minutes from January 22nd, meeting minutes from February 5th. The bills from January 10th to February 10th, the receipts from January 10th, February 10th, and profit and loss statement from January 10th to February 10th. Does anyone have any comments or want to pull an item for discussion?
I'm moved that we accept the consent agenda items A through E.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous as well, Larry. All right. Next item is announcements and correspondence. You have two items on this. Go ahead.
Yes, so the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, they are going to, I guess each year they have to do a statement of interest, and as counselors and commissioners, and that's going to start on March 15th. So some of you, Larry, you might have gotten an invite from them. And that has to be done by April 15th, so there's no, you have to do that by tax day. If not, then you do start to incur fines. So just saying.
Okay, I got it. I may have gotten an invitation, but do I do it online?
Yes.
It's dead online and you can't do it before the 15th.
You can do it before the 15th in what?
March.
March?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's March 15th.
Did you have to have it done by April 15th?
Yes. They give you 30 days.
Okay.
If you've gotten invitations because you're a new name, and they're really helpful if you call them, they walk you right through it.
Okay, that's fine. So I need to do that between March 15th and April 15th. I'll make a note, because I love fines.
Yes. They went up pretty, they graduated pretty quickly, so.
League of Cities mentioned that, that the ethics folks may have overreached, like in our case, it's an unpaid position, but if you don't tell them you didn't get paid, you get fined like $500. I said, why would anyone knowing that run for office? She's like, I don't know, but it's too late for either of you. You were appointed a planning commissioner. Because my notice went to the state after the deadline. She's like, but you were a planning commissioner in January, and it's June. I'm like, oh no. I'm not going to pay any fines. I'll quit. So she said, I filed it, but anyway, so they are very helpful that first year. And after that, you know, it should be.
On your own, you know, it's good.
Yeah.
But after you fill it out the first time, Larry, your last year's is there. You can just go through it and you just make any changes. It's totally easy to do from there now.
Yeah.
Is that ethical?
Yes.
That's what I do reviewing.
Yeah. All right. And ethics training.
So going further on ethics, we're actually going to have a training session here, because in the class that Chris and I attended, I realized that the staff needed to attend as well. So I figured it'd be easier if we just did it here. So we're actually going to have them come do a training session on June 25th. It will be in the morning. They haven't actually set a time. They would have said morning, so.
Is it the same presentation?
It would be the same presentation that you and I introduced there.
Okay.
The same one over here.
Yeah, but you're.
Unless there's a change of statute, yeah.
Yeah.
So who would be, email be from?
Is it O? Is it O G E C? Ah, no. It'll say jurisdictional contact, something like that. Let me see if I can find mine, because of course I have to get one too. Yeah, O G E C dot notification.
O G E C. Okay, thank you.
At E C O dot com.
And is the training for government only? Like, are they going to invite Reese Port and Lawrence if they want to come? So it's not a public, it's a, it's.
Yeah, we're hosting.
Other end?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're going to host it then. And then 10 to the, 10 to the lead on March 22nd, from 10 to noon, and this is going to be new for you, Mayor. We, that's when our shred day is going to be. So it's going to be a Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. They, the company had to totally change what they had told me originally, so that is the tentative date of it right now.
All right. Very good. All right. Let's move on. Item seven, citizens' input on items not discussed on the agenda. Ms. Jackson, you will speak.
Yes, I, I would, Jimmy Jackson, I just, I just. I just am concerned about being clear on the rules, because it seems like I'm learning the rules every time I come here. And I want to make sure that I understand what the policies are. I think it might be very helpful if the public were included on the ethics or the policies or the way their meetings are conducted, because we certainly don't mean to be rude or disrespectful, but it's very hard to understand when we may speak, when we may not. I get it now in the meetings, but that we're called into account for things that were said outside of a meeting. That is hard to understand. So what are your rules about that? How about if it is before a meeting or after a meeting, when we're hoping to address one of you, that you're very hard to reach other, like in fact, you don't make your phone numbers available? So is there a time when citizens can do that, can communicate with each other?
Yeah, work through staff. If, if, because they can always get in touch with us. And our schedules vary a lot depending on which councilperson, but work through the staff if you want to speak to someone specifically.
Yeah, thank you. I have been working through staff and through others to try to meet with you, Mayor McGuire, since before Christmas.
Okay, and on the.
It's just awkward.
On the ethics training, we'll see what the, how many people are signed up, if we have room for a citizen. I mean, if you would like to attend, you know, we'll see if we've got room.
Thank you. I'm not sure I could make that particular meeting anyway, because people are basically out there, but thank you.
Okay.
But I would like to just, you know, if there were a list or something, that would be really helpful. If those of us who attend your meeting have a clear list of how we may or may not speak, how we may or may not conduct ourselves, and what it is that, you know, entails getting kicked out of a meeting. It seems like just standing up for yourself entails getting kicked out of meetings. And I, I want to be a good citizen. I've always been a good citizen. I want to understand what the rules are, because.
Well, we follow the open meeting law fairly strictly. No other, there's no local regulations that we've enacted, but thanks for the comment.
Can I add something?
Sure, of course, yeah.
Personally, just, just me, I've always been open to everybody and anybody in New City to call me at my shop in personal place, leave a message. I've always gotten back with everybody that's ever called me. I think it's important that a counselor is open and accessible to the public, so.
Thank you.
Just speaking for myself, anytime I'm on anything, as long as I'm sitting up here, I'm, I'm open to be talked about anything.
Thank you very much. I hope others still say.
Appreciate that. Any other comments? All right, we'll get to item eight, mayor's report. So it's been a busy week or two. We met a week or so ago with the Department of Environmental Quality. So the state, the state collects some money from trash companies and recyclers. There's some money available to entities for education mostly. They have four different programs they can fund. We don't qualify for everything based on the size. Someone notes about a transfer station or something like that, and they said, you know, we're, we're welcome at the Lane County Transfer Station in Florence. But the biggie was education on recyclables, on what really is recyclable and what is not, because they get a lot of junk, you know, they get a lot of trash they've got to pick out of there before it's recyclable, so. And then the county called and said, hey, you need to have this meeting because we have this money. And it's just a pass-through from the state, so we already met with the state, but. So it's based on your number of residents, but it doesn't come directly to the city. It's got to go to a recycler or recycling educational outreach or something. So, so we're talking about getting a little share of that. Maybe it could go as newsletter article kind of thing. They'll pay for newsletter, but the rest will go to our trash company. That'll send a direct mail piece probably to all of our residents. But the good news was, we're sort of getting the big city standard for trash and recycling. Cities under 10,000 aren't required to have glass and things like that, and they already do. And they said they're not looking to do a way with anything. So anyway, it was kind of all good news. We were, it was kind of funny, because she said, we have a grant. And I was going, we don't have a trash company. She said, you're obligated to apply for this grant. I'm like, well, it doesn't sound like a grant then. But it's basically money that's based on the population, so every city, they want to make sure there's some sort of outreach or educational program. So look for a postcard in your mailbox one of these days, or have, and probably stickers. They said, if I got to make stickers to stick on recycling bins, so you don't have to remember, you know, and they will do it on recycle day. You know, trash day, they will stick it on your trash can, so you'll know what.
What about residents that don't have a trash company?
Then they're on their own to recycle what they want and have a transfer station, yeah. And then we have a meeting this Friday to go over some questions with the water master, water master's office about water rights and the need for, we've got a municipal water right that implies there's a municipal water system under construction at some point, and there's not, ever been. So we're going to talk to them about maybe getting this permit amended, so that we're not chasing this, because it turns into like an every year status report on what's the status of your plant, you know? Are you acquiring real estate or building a tank? And like, at this point, I don't think it's ever going to happen, because the number of people that connect to it is dwindling. It's future vacant lots. There's no method for the state to require anybody that's already got their own system to do anything. So it's kind of like build a, build a whole water system for a dwindling number of customers, or potential customers. So anyway, we've, we've got some good questions for them, and they're going to have the staff together on Friday for some, to help guide us. And we have the franchise agreement with Central Lincoln P U D. We just got another email from the attorney reviewing that, and I think we're about done with that. That'll be in front of the council soon. And similar tonight, adopting the new agreement, because it's a long-term agreement, will be an ordinance, so there'll be a public notice. So you'll see it, and then it'll go in the paper, and then you'll see it again for action. It's a couple of steps, but. And then today was the League of Cities regional meeting. We had the president of Oregon League of Cities today, and they gave us the, this year's theme, or the meeting's theme was basically revenue for government entities, all the available between property tax, sales tax, and all the other possibility, fuel tax. And they put together this guidebook that has a whole bunch of things. So Lila and I just got this second. We're going to go through, make some copies, and then hand them out if you want to have ideas. So there's a lot of user fees that are not a tax. You don't have to have a vote. You can say the, this industry or this activity could have a user fee. One of the examples was an environmental fee for everybody that has a street where we have to clear the ditches, and, which is basically everybody, every resident in the city. You could charge a fee that would go towards like ditch clearing and landscaping. Some of that's covered with gas tax, if it's part of the right of way and it affects the roadway, but I think sometimes we've taken some liberties on some of the tree limbing and, you know, grinding vegetation. And so it's gas tax eligible, but we get a very small piece of gas tax too, that comes away from like pothole repairs and things like that. So that was an example. There's a number of possibilities. You could pick any of them or none of them, or whatever, but it's for, for discussion. But there, this is where it's good news to be a small city. They talk about all the restrictions and limitations on a lot of the fees. And a lot of the cities that had a fee to pay for something, it's now limited their ability, because it can't raise the fee. And there was one city that collected a fee for libraries. They're talking about closing three libraries, because it can't afford to maintain them anymore, because it doesn't index to inflation, you know, it costs more. Who would maintain it? So it's kind of an Oregon issue that doesn't really affect us. You know, this is where we were excited to say, we don't have that much money. None of what you're talking about is affecting us today, which was the good news. The bad news is we don't have a whole lot of money for services either, but anyway, good meeting. We had two hours of good discussion at Florence Fest Center. And then we've discovered, we have the auditor working on our citywide audit, and we found out we need an independent audit of the building fund. The enterprise fund itself needs its own audit, so we're going to start with our auditor and see if it's an easy add-on to do a detailed audit of that fund. Because it's an enterprise fund and Luba oversees that, I guess, we didn't realize this, it wasn't audited last year, so I don't know if this is every few years thing or what, but we're a little behind the eight ball on that, and it is really hard to find government auditor. If we need to find a different company, it'll be really difficult to meet the deadline this year, but anyway, we're, we're looking into it. So that's everything I have.
Is the fund just in one bank account?
All of the money's in the same bank, but yeah, it's itemized in that budget reported here, so everything that we collect for building permit. So building permits, if you want to change the permit fee, you need to get the land use folks involved, and so. And I guess what came out of that is auditing it, because it's an enterprise fund, it can't make much money, it has to cover its cost. It should cover its cost, but it can't make excessive amount of money, nor should you expect to lose an excessive amount of money. Florence was subsidizing their building permits. It took them a long time to adjust their fees. So it ended up a really big increase, like 40% last year. And ours are basically covering everything, but they won't forever. It's the cost of labor. You know, we pay a third party to review everything and inspect everything. It's their cost, so we'll have to adjust those.
So how many transactions interout that happened in a year, just a guess?
All the bill, you know, the monthly statements in here, it's not an enormous number for us. I mean, we've built a dozen custom homes, and then on top of that, a bunch of remodels and.
So if we have, if we have a CPA firm that can audit it, it shouldn't take a lot of work, right?
It shouldn't, except most firms won't. If they do any other kind of business, it's government auditors. And because it can't work for any of those clients, and so it ends up a pretty small pool of people that, that do the audits for governments. We, we reached out to 50 this year, because our old auditor basically fired us. And we got one proposal back.
Wow.
For substantially more than we used to pay. And that was their best, their best price, their best brand new customer price. Yeah, we kind of ran out of options.
Or the deadline.
Yeah, it's a tough spot. And last year, we were this close to meeting the, that was the budget deadline, not the audit deadline. But yeah, the state's got some mandated deadlines, and there is no extensions. They don't have a mechanism, so yeah, we're all painted in the same corner. And everybody that needs a government audit needs it at exactly the same time.
Right.
And it's really business model.
We need to be working on a auditor for five years next.
Well, if this goes well, yeah, we'll have a company. We hope we can extend this. It was a lot more money, but in theory, it covered everything we need.
We ran out of options, and we ran out of it at the high line.
Yeah. Yep. So, anyway. Permit report, which kind of goes to your question, you know, this is, I mean, the number's not enormous. Are they in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry. How many items from that side?
And two from the back.
This is from our direct data.
We have 13, you are reviewed. I mean, you didn't get one.
31, so we still have four.
31 short-term rentals, and yeah, like permit activity this month, one structural, one mechanical, or two mechanical, two plumbing, and one electrical. So a lot of times, the two electrical and the two mechanical, and the two plumbing might be the same thing, you know, it's a furnace or water heater.
Dwelling, yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, you're right. It's relatively small numbers, and it's all focused on building funds, so I hope it's not hard to get it out. All right. Any other questions on that, before we move on? Seeing none? Public hearing for Charter Communications franchise agreement. All right. This evening, we have a public hearing on the renewal of the Charter Communications franchise agreement. These proceedings will be recorded. Does any counselor wish to declare conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact with Charter Communications? Anyone? Yeah?
No.
Okay. Does any member of the public wish to challenge a counselor's impartiality?
Well, I'm not going that. I just want to know a little more about this. This is something that has been known for some time, but.
Well, this is, I gotta read my script. We haven't got to that part.
Okay, all right.
It's a public hearing, so I'll.
Okay.
We'll get to the discussion part.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I now open the public hearing for franchise agreement renewal. It is 6:21 p.m. And we will have a staff report.
So yes, with Charter Communications, we've had a franchise agreement with them for the last 10 years. And so what they're trying to do is do a renewal of the same agreement that we have.
And this is specific to internet and TV, not wireless. This, so Charter has a number of business units around here. This is the buried cable and/or phone lines. If you have landline, internet, or cable TV from them, that would be covered for their rights to be in the city railways to serve the homes in the city.
All right. Thank you. That's all I wanted to understand. I guess that doesn't apply to us anyway.
Okay.
Just wanted to know who it applies to.
So the agreement is in your pocket.
And that is the current agreement.
Okay. So have all the counselors had a chance to review the franchise agreement? Okay. And while you're looking, do any of the counselors propose any changes to the current agreement?
I have a question about the percentage that they're paying to us. 5% of annual gross revenue.
Yeah.
How much money is that?
That equals about, I'd say, 7 to 9 a quarter, 7 to 9,000.
7 to 9 a quarter, okay. So these are customers in our service area that have either tele, television or internet, maybe telephone.
Or landline, yeah.
Through Charter.
Yeah.
Okay. And do we have any other franchise agreements other than that?
We will have Hyatt. I mean, we do have Hyatt, but they're not here yet.
Yeah, right.
I mean, Spectrum, is that Spectrum?
That's a same iron.
That's ten people.
Yeah.
They did merge, so. Is there anybody else that, AT&amp;T, anybody that serves?
Everything else is wireless.
Everything else.
And those are regulated only by, but we don't get any on cell or anything. And 5% is the cap. That's as much as you can ask for.
Right. But I guess as their revenue goes up, as their rates go up, then we give them money?
Exactly. Or the number of customers, yeah.
Right, so it speaks to ever, you know, doing it there. You could do a looksee if we wanted to see their customer database. Do they provide that information routinely or not?
Not the number of customers, but the gross revenue. They gave you a report and say, this is the revenue, this is the period, and this is your share.
Right, so I think somewhere in the agreement, it speaks to being able to look at that data. Do we have an institutional interest in doing that?
I don't think we ever have.
I don't, I don't believe we have. I don't have any record of that.
One of the councilors, too?
Oh, I just think it'd be interesting to know what the demographic is.
And I don't know well they'll share.
Well, it says they're all of you.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean you'll see everything, but.
Oh, that's true. But I mean, I think it'd be interesting to know. And do they serve all areas of the city?
I think they do, compared to not. You say, you say you're not covered by.
Actually, my husband just said we are, because we're for a spectrum.
Yeah.
And I know this is something that Administrator Mills has spoken about at length on different occasions, so that's why I was concerned. And she wasn't real happy with the deal we had, so I wonder if we couldn't do a better deal. Or why won't they charge what we are, because the service is pretty sketchy? Maybe she would be a good person to reach out to, because I think she, she certainly knows what the service has been up until now.
I think it varies. Well, I don't even know that this is, this agreement covers that.
It's not part of the franchise agreement. That would be something that their customer service would have to handle.
Right.
What we're basically talking about is their access to our streets, power poles.
Yes.
Yep.
And the power poles is a deal they have with the power company.
Right, right, right. But you know, that talks to, talks about construction and infrastructure. So I just wonder if, does it follow the streets? Is it, does it, where is it, is there any area?
Most of it's overhead and follows a power line, so anybody that's got access to electricity has access.
Okay.
To phone and now K-7 for internet. Yeah, I think they serve 100% of the city.
Okay, that's good. Well, I think most people want internet.
Yes. And with I bringing fiber to home, I know my, I don't know that anything actually changed, but I got the reminder from customer service that they increased my speed at no additional cost, right about the time the city approved an agreement with a competitor. So you usually see that when somebody else comes to town. The, you know, the price will go down slightly, or the speeds will go up for the same price, or, you know, they'll sweeten the pot, but. Yeah, from our perspective, it's making sure they have access to the right of way, and that they pay us for that access to the city streets.
They quadrupled my speed, but it also had to be a modem. Yeah, because some of the modems, they're, they're bound to Wi-Fi 7 if you want to have Wi-Fi signal on your home, but it really, it involved getting a new modem. You get the speed that they were trying to give me for free.
Gotcha. Maybe need to look at my modem.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So I was under the impression that our other franchise agreement, the Hyatt, was supposed to start January 1st of this year, am I incorrect?
It is, it did start, however, they don't have service here.
They don't have any.
No, they're just, they're just starting to build now that they have a agreement.
Well, they're pretty much in the road. You can see them quite often now.
In New City?
They have contacted Pam for me.
Okay, good, because their original holdup was they didn't want to cross the river.
Oh, no, there's, I've seen them right in, I mean, one of the areas that I, the mobile hole on 101, cross from the viewpoint. They've been there quite a bit.
So I know they've been walking the neighborhoods too, looking and.
There are a lot of people reporting on the social media, they're out there pushing.
And Hyatt will be underground, because I don't think they have to deal with the power company at all, right? Because it's already expected.
When do we anticipate, or have we received any?
We haven't received any information from them as to when, just that, you know, I know that they have reached out to Pam. That was the next step, so I can follow up.
As soon as they have a paying customer, they write us a check, right?
Yeah, because we did a.
We did a dollar amount, and that'll get to a certain number, and then it'll be the 5%. Yeah.
So I would anticipate, because when you were asking all, you know, competitors, I would anticipate from just the, the communication out there in, in our locations about the displeasement of Spectrum with a lot of people, that Hyatt might grow pretty rapidly.
Well, so to your question is, it looks like we'll substitute one form of revenue for.
For another one, so.
5%. So it's the number of people with an internet bill times 5%, basically.
Yeah.
We're not going to be letting the precipice drop off.
No.
Right, I think it'll just go from one company to the other.
Sure. Do you mean a motion?
Well, no, not yet. So did you have a proposed revision or anything? That's where I ran my script anyway.
No, I'm good.
Okay. And then we'll take additional testimony from.
Okay.
Do you feel good?
No, I'm good.
Okay. You need another minute, Melissa?
No, I'm, yeah, I agree with that.
Susan's good?
Good.
Larry?
Good.
All right. We will now be taking testimony from all those who wish to testify. If you have not already done so, sign in and include your name and mailing address. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes, limited to a total of 30 to 40 minutes, he says, for this public input. Individuals making public comment are asked to refrain from duplicating comments made by a prior speaker. Any person desiring to address the council by oral communication must address the entire council as a body, and not any particular member. Counselors may enter into discussions with the person testifying, but no one else in the audience is allowed to speak at that time. Questions, however, may be posed to staff, and staff may respond to the counselors. All questions posed are posed through the presiding officer. We will now take testimony from those in favor, if any. We will now take testimony from those in favor, if any. Would anyone like to speak in favor of the extension? Or did you want to speak on?
I just had a question.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Question. So, look, I was concerned about, and I know that the councilman had brought this up at a previous meeting, that, you know, we should get together and do something about this. Would it be helpful at all, can you speak as the mayor or for the city? When the power goes out and we all lose our connection? As individuals, we have no rights at all. Is it possible to get ahold of anybody?
Are you talking about for internet or for electricity?
Yes. Does the city have some power to say what's going on? You have a lot of people here.
On which? On the electricity or the internet?
Well, I guess I'm saying both because, as you know, we have a lot of bad storms on the Oregon coast. And do you have any special power that the citizens do not have?
We have several powers.
Yeah.
Not to be facetious.
Is that helpful?
We do have a customer service agent that we can call directly. You can go through the, and I know it's about impossible when the power's out and it says, email us or get on the internet. It's like, hmm, I'm sitting in the dark with no electricity or phone service, but. We do have a customer service agent at a power company. I don't know of anyone at Spectrum, though I have used the 800 number successfully with their customer service. And I got the phone app because they send it to the app for everything, both the power company and the local cable company, but. So the answer is sort of, I mean, we have a customer service person, so if it happens repeatedly, absolutely. We can make a list during the event? Probably not. Now, we happen to have a neighbor and friend that I know who's been at the power company for 20 years. And he said, the good news is now, in the Florence area, including us, that we've got two feeds. There's still some stretches in the middle up by Newport. When they had the ice storm last year, depot bay didn't have power for like a week, eight days. We were out of power for three minutes. And so, uh, so from his perspective, and he's a lineman for the power company, he said, we're in really good shape now. Most of our, our outages are short because we've got a couple of big feeds now to this part of the coast. So I think power outages will decrease. I think as, Spectrum has a lot of stuff on power lines in the air, which is subject to, you know, tree limbs and ice and wind. The competitor, I believe, is burying everything. They might be affected by a flood, but generally the wind and the things we usually see, probably not. So I came from an entity where everything was underground since the late 80s and, uh, other than transmission lines. And we basically had no outages for very short term for power, telephone, cable. Pretty much everything was protected. So it costs more, but it pays back over time. So I think, as you see competition, they have the opportunity to underground, I think, in their agreement if they choose to. If we just, you know, if we force them to, we have to share the cost, but both the power company and the cable company, if they go underground at their own free will, we don't pay any additional, but it usually gets more reliable. So over time, it is improving.
Thank you, and you're right. You know, the desert is something from the Oregon coast and as you know, we have a lot of getting wet in the series.
Oh, it was windier where it came from.
Really?
Way windier.
Really? I'm in the Las Vegas.
So this past week, we lost power on Cloud Nine. It was an isolated outage. And so I fired up my generator and plugged it into the side of a house. But more to your point is I received at least three or four text messages from Spectrum saying, we have an outage in your area, what we're working on. And this was all coming in through my, my 5G Mint Mobile, you know.
Yeah, on the phone, right.
But as soon as I fired up my generator, my internet was back just like that. So it was just a power outage. But if your power takes out your modem.
Right.
You don't have internet. So if you have a backup source of power, you might have it.
Right.
You get this.
Right. No, I'm with you if you got the phone app. I've been impressed. At 6:00 AM, it's like your internet's out, but it's been restored by the time you waited.
Yeah, that's right.
Hey, well, they did all the work at night and everything, so that can serve us. Okay, so now the specific part. Is there anyone that wants to testify in favor? Or is there anyone who would like to testify in opposition, if any? Counselors, do you have any specific questions?
No.
Melissa?
No.
Susan?
Chris?
No. There. Okay. I will now close this public hearing. It is 6:35. So, uh, do we need to deliberate? I mean, if there's no additional discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the renewal of the franchise agreement with Charter Communications.
Okay. And I need a second?
Second.
Thank you. And for ordinance, we need to do a voice or whatever, a, a roll call. Yes, I'll start with you, Larry. Mr. Smart, you know what I'm starting with? Chris?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Yes.
Duke uses power. Hang on, Duke.
I'm bringing my hair in.
Melissa?
Yes.
Duke?
I'll let you answer.
Yes, for dinner.
It's your turn. I don't need to break the tie. All right. Uh, is there anything else you need from us? Because the language is specific to approve by ordinance, right? You good? You got everything?
Yes.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Okay, uh, new business. Appoint budget committee members. So I think as of, as of this moment, we have a renewal, right? Mr. Allen Snow, is it?
Yes. Yes.
Did we get an application from Joe Giamone? We had a verbal.
We had a verbal. No actual application.
Okay, when he retired from the council, so I'm comfortable with that because I asked him point blank and he said, yes, he would help out on budget committee. So if that's okay, I will put Joe Giamone in front of you for a vote and we'll follow up with him.
I did ask him just last week and he still said yes.
Okay, so, uh, I think Duke's the only one that, or then Larry may not do it. He was councilman.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so if he's okay, um, we can approve those two and then. We put this in the city survey, we got some volunteers, some specifically said budget committee. We emailed, we reached out to them, we haven't gotten any back. Um, I was gonna try, so our budget committee, the makeup is stated as the mayor council and six citizen members. So basically a citizen for each council person. But the quorum is based on those available. So if we only have two citizen members, then we just need a majority of the mayor council and the two citizen members. So it won't keep us from having a meeting, but I will make one last ditch effort on the neighborhood Facebook page and say, we're gonna start meeting. The next meeting is the training. And then if everyone comes prepared, we hope to get through this in three meetings. So it won't go on forever. And so I'm gonna put that on the post and say, you know, we'd volunteer this spring for three meetings. And, and I think, uh, Gail Nichols volunteered last year and she's not interested in this year. So, uh, Gail's staying on plan, I believe, but not on budget committee, so. So anyway, if that makes sense to everyone, we'll take a vote on the two, the two members, the two citizen members. Alan Snow and Joe Giamone. Are those in favor?
Alright.
Any vote? Okay, so that'll be our, so at this point, we've, we've, uh, we've elected a budget officer or appointed a budget officer. Is that what we did at the last meeting? We've got two citizen members and we'll see if we can get some more citizen members and then we'll start meeting. Is it work?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on that, on next steps for budget? Does it have a draft budget through in here?
Do we have a budget calendar yet?
Yes.
It was in the last basket.
Oh, it was when you were online. It was in the packet from two months ago.
I can send it to you.
Thank you, please.
Yeah, there's a one pager there with the target dates.
Sounds good.
And then all business was chapter 91 and our assignment was just a markup, uh, the Newport ordinance. So if you've got it, give it to Lila, she'll combine our comments and we'll have a discussion in the future. Any questions or comments on that? I talked to Rich. He has it in his hands and was out sick, so he's gonna get it to Lila on the next day. All right. With that, for the good of the order, um, let's start with Larry.
Can we get an update on hiring a full-time board officer?
I had one phone call of interest. That's it.
So.
So we're making progress.
Yeah, so can you tell me something? Is this a full-time, part-time, or is it?
Part-time.
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 Okay, and generally what, what's the compensation in hours for this job?
Well, it's work in progress, um, but the idea was to basically be available, uh, on the weekends, right? To monitor the short-term rentals and some other issues. So that's what we're looking for is mostly weekends. Yeah, and helping with, uh, helping with that, just making sure that short-term rentals are staying within our code.
And our total spend is really limited by short-term rentals. You know, we're looking at spending some of that revenue or most of that revenue, this new fee schedule to cover it. So we're at 31.
31.
What were we a year ago?
I think we had like 30 and 38.
37, 38.
We were up higher because of.
And we had, we had additional number of the, didn't require a license because they were occupied part-time. So most of those have gone away. So the number has shrunk a little bit, if it's accurate. So hopefully the need has shrunk a little bit, but yeah, that was the idea, is that revenue would go towards that and would be self-funded, if you will.
Okay, so here's my question. Is it possible that we could conceive of having someone do septic inspections that was also our code enforcement officer? In other words, you remember last week, Rich, or last meeting, Rich brought up that we're kind of being hamstrung by the septic pumping companies and one hand is feeding the other. And we could, we could probably find a professional way to train somebody to do this work. And make that part of code enforcement.
Right.
And maybe that would flush the job out so that it would be more attractive to someone.
Yeah, code enforcement and septic is the two most glamorous.
Right.
Things you could put in one.
Exactly. I was thinking in terms of finding a, finding a part-time FTE or a full-time FTE, somebody that could do that. And of course, we could charge for these inspections, but we wouldn't charge.
Right, we would pay for it, it'd pay for itself.
Yeah, we'd pay for it, so we wouldn't be charging what these other folks are doing. And that, there could be an aspect of, um, citizen education.
Right.
Like saying, okay, you have just one person living here. You don't have to pump every five years. You can pump 10 years. Or the code enforcement officer, if they're trained in the inspection, they could make a assessment. They could say, really, with the age of your tank.
Well, and that's who it falls to, right? If it's an odor complaint, the first step would be a code enforcement person. So I could hear leach field saturated and, you know, our tank's near full and. And since you brought up the, the subject, we could do some research. So there was a settlement, if you will, there was a challenge or an appeal with the Luba. Luba told us what we had to do last time. And I'm sorry, Rich isn't here because he brought it up. And you were here for that.
Yeah.
Right? And so they said, well, because you said in your original ordinance, you were gonna do more than the minimum, you gotta do more than the minimum.
It was codified in.
So, so we kind of got to the language we're at, but we reached out to the EPA because this comes from the feds to the state, state to the county. And they said, you can give a waiver, there is some, uh, you know, there is a little wiggle room in their mind. And so I think a couple of choices. Like one would be, it's a certificate class. You gotta have a certificate, right? And so that's doable. We could pay if we had somebody that wanted to do it, we could pay for that certificate class per employee. Number one. Number two, we think if you have access to your tank, some people can get to it, some people can't. Some people you need a little excavator, some it's buried, you can beat down, but, um, if we gave them a form to fill out and they dipped it themselves, because their rule of thumb is if you're less than 40%, don't do anything.
Of the solid.
Yeah. And so you don't really need to know how much is scum and solid. You just need to know, I'm, I'm running this deep and the tank's this deep.
Right.
You could do it with a yardstick or a ruler and some rubber gloves. So this is doable by a homeowner. You don't need to climb inside or touch anything. You need to hit the bottom of the tank and measure to the, you know, to where the wet line is on the stick. So we're thinking we could come up with some options that wouldn't require, you know, we're not changing the ordinance. We would do this by resolution and say, here's some other methods to meet that. And we think we could do that. The EPA, shockingly, was the most like, yeah, you can give a waiver or, or find a different way to do it. So I think a couple of choices, like one could be a homeowner that's, that feels like they can do it. I mean, my lid sticks out of my lawn. I covered it so the sun didn't shine on. Mine's really easy to get to, so this is, I, I could film a training video. Mine's really easy to get to. But Duke hold the stick and I'll film it. And I am that single guy with a, with three bathroom house, so yeah, I'm, my assumption is I should.
You never.
I should go 15 or 20 years is what I worry about. But my letter says see you in five years.
Oh, I know.
Right? So I'm two years into that, so I got three years to work this out. Right, this is our red check. But I agree, if, if it was a city body, we can pay for the training and come up with a, you know, some homeowner. So you'd have a couple of choices. And, uh, and we did talk to Oregon Water Services and they do it for a flat hourly rate. And they come out of Eugene, but they don't charge until they get here. So it's actually pretty attractive. It's like 115 bucks an hour.
$115 an hour. $115 fuel surcharge.
So if it's easy to get to, it's probably less than an hour. It should be way less than an hour. So we could have a couple of choices. You might be able to get a $75, $100 inspection or do it yourself, or we could look into a city.
So I was curious about this. I asked, um, a person and they said that somebody like, um, a company that starts with a W, they have all of this historical information, this is where people's septic are.
Yeah.
Now, isn't that the information that's filed with the company, with the county?
It is.
And so if we had a septic inspector on staff, he would be able to access all that.
I think most of our building permits have the same thing with county, because we require a county permit.
So we have it in-house, right?
To build a house.
Right, so.
When I bought my house, it came from the city. And all the copies were still in the file from when my house was built in 78. So we do have pretty solid paper records. And it did have that sketch where here's where the leach field is, here's where the tank is, and it looks pretty accurate.
Well, maybe we could look into what it would cost to train somebody. I think if you found a person with the right skill set who is capable of lifting a shovel.
Yeah.
And also knows how to fill out some paperwork.
Yeah.
And could be trained on doing those tests, we'd be doing our citizens a great service. And we could break the back of this monopoly.
Well, and, and I'm okay if they want to make a living at, at the same time, like where it's prohibitively expensive for a few people. We have a short number of people that I just can't afford it. And if nothing's backing up them, I don't want to do it. Our only concern is, is it functioning, right? If it's functioning, that's all we want to know, right? Because it's our, it's also our drinking water is sharing the same soil and everything runs downhill to a lake or a stream. So that's the reason it was done, but yeah, there's some unintended consequences that, you know, some people feel a little pinched.
I'm also thinking it would help us with our code enforcement. Because if we're having trouble getting to the level of, uh, you know, employment, it would make it attractive to somebody. The way to make that a little more attractive is to say, there's another.
Yeah, for solid waste.
Well, you know, there's a lot of people who I think would, that would be interested.
It, it is a sellable skill around here.
Yeah.
Right? Most of these little coastal communities don't have wastewater treatment plants.
Right.
Yeah, and we are the strictest. I mean, talking to the county and the state, we're the only city that requires it on a routine basis.
That's right.
So yeah, I think, I think it was well-intended, but had unintended consequences. Because of the way it was phrased, you can't get out of it. And for better or for worse, we are the champion of septic inspections in the state of Oregon.
So if Oregon Water Services are charging about $130 to do an inspection, we could anticipate that that would be one of the fees the city would charge.
Could be a $100 inspection.
For an inspector that's paid for by the city. I mean, they're paying, position is paid by the city, but we could charge $100. And then that person, that our, our citizens wouldn't feel like they would be walked into a pumping situation.
Right.
Right now. Which I think would be really great.
Yep.
So, I think it's something we should investigate further.
Sure. For sure, so, yeah, so we got some good info, we were gonna make a little presentation, but yeah, it's a good question.
So I have a second question.
Okay.
With regards to our discussion with the water master, you know, they seem to be more interested in water rights. And ODFW seems to be more interested in fish habitat.
Yeah.
But we're doing a lot of work with fish habitat. And we're using these pumps with fish and according to my plumber, he says, you know, he says, I can give you a pump, and you guys can take it apart if you want. He says, there's already a screen in there.
Yeah.
So you're not, the fish filter itself is ridiculous, in my opinion. And it's ridiculous in their opinion, because there's no fish that's gonna make it past the screen that's part of the mechanical pump, it's just not gonna get in there. So it would seem to me that if we're not being paid by the state to do something, and if there's some way that we can say, well, we don't want this job anymore. I would say that's
Well, the lake testing, we haven't been doing it, and they took all the
No, I know, what I'm saying is enforcing the provision of fish filters.
That one we have to, it's associated with a municipal permit, it's on all municipals, so that's one of the questions we have, is if we stuck to individual diversions.
Right.
Historically, those aren't required to have a fish screen, so the, the old individual pumps, they don't have such a requirement, so that's part of our discussion on Friday is.
Right, well, I would, I would ask you to have a conversation with them, because it seems to me like if we could get rid of the number one irritant for people.
I don't know that we, I think it's in state law.
Well, but if there's a screen on a pump, isn't that also a fish filter?
Well, yes and no, they'll say no, but you're right, because the pumps that this was written around, if you read the original ordinance, it's thirty CFS or greater.
Right.
Those are big pumps, our entire city allocation is one and a half CFS.
Right.
Irrigation pumps that can move thirty CFS.
That's a lot of water.
Yeah, you can suck up an entire truck. They're big intakes, and they move water fast, and they're seasonal. And these are year round, you know, low velocity. So it ended up, started out, which were very large irrigation pumps and big diversions, and it's trickled down to everybody that has a stream or is on the coast, you know, and yeah, I don't know that, I mean, when you go through the environmental permitting at federal level, the first is, you gotta establish something and prove that it's effective. I think you pointed out, like, we've got a one size fits all mandate.
Right.
No one's proved this is effective, it's just became the required.
So who do we have that conversation with, to get relief?
That's a fish and wildlife requirement.
That's what I'm saying, maybe, maybe there's some conversations with the fish and wildlife, because, you know, we're burning up pumps prematurely.
Yeah.
We're not saving any fish, there are screens in these pumps.
Yeah.
So since it's not a big municipal system, we need relief on that.
So Friday is up with them, we had a meeting with them, and they were like, oh yeah, sure, send us a picture, we'll give you a screen design.
Right.
Like, there's, they have no mindset of like, what does the world look like without a screen on it?
I honestly think the only fix is legislative, you'd have to go to the, you'd have to go to the states.
A cold boomer, right, loves things like this.
Yeah, I think that's what you have to do, you have to at least ask them, say, look, you know, we have small small outlets, we have screens already, we'd like some legislative relief from this, and I don't know that it will pass the legislature, but, you know, putting it out.
Bring the attention to it, right, right.
And so you're right, I think it is a boomer problem.
Yeah.
But it's premature, until we say to them, wait a second, we're doing all this work for you, and it's not bringing us any return on investment.
Yeah.
Not at all.
Yeah.
You know, it's actually a negative, so I'd like to see us pursue that.
Well, we'll see where this discussion takes us on Friday.
Yeah. I mean, the water master asked me, she said, would you be willing to go scuba diving and check people's fish filters? I'm like, hell no.
What, if there was a hundred dollar fee?
I'm not doing it.
We could do septic.
I don't need to get in that cold lake with a scuba tank.
A hundred dollars would not cover the cost of your tank, of refilling.
Yeah, well, it's five dollars to fill my tank.
Yeah, but the the time you
By the time you get everything
Pressurized inspections.
Can you buy air around here?
No.
No. You have to go to Eugene's Scuba Bank.
Oh, but it's not five dollars anymore.
Well, it's, it's five dollars after you get your tank up there, and they do it cheap, just because they want to give you good air, so they have sanitized air, because you can get compressed air anywhere, but it's not for cheap.
Yeah, you mean the gas thing.
Yeah, cough, cough.
All right. Thank you, Chris?
I don't know.
Sue? Who was that?
I just wanted to point out, in reference to Jackson's request on the Oregon government ethics, I was scrolling through the website. They're open to public, we can all call them as citizens.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So maybe if you call Oregon, I mean, I can give you the number if you'd like it, and ask them, because just looking at different things, there are on demand courses, there's training resources, and nothing is specific to public, but, I mean, I would see as to why somebody in the public could not take one.
And Brenda had Lain Council of Government, same, they're like, I got a handout for open meeting law, and, you know, so we've shared some of that information, but, you know, most of it, they just say, here, we follow state law, you just have to know where to find them.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Dixon, I have called them actually, I called them about a year ago, and they gave me some advice. But it was all, but they swore they'd get back to me, and no one ever called me back. So it's kind of the way it's been lately, and ever since COVID, I'm sure people have the same frustrations, just nobody's there, there's a voice, you know. I never got a return back, but I wonder how they not talked to you, because I noticed that you changed, things changed, it didn't seem to be after that. One thing was, it was not enough warning on your meetings, or what the meetings were even be about, and that has improved greatly, so, you know, maybe did they reach out to you? But actually, I have called them, spoken to them, but I didn't understand, I don't know about the form of law particularly, like, each city's different. What are their rules and regulations? I'd love to have a list, because I'm a law-abiding citizen, and I would like to, I would like to be behaving properly. When it's hard to determine what being proper is, it's difficult.
There's also an email here, if you're interested, you can get on that, they have an email, so I know you do a lot.
And you know, I don't know, seriously, but we're going to learn that, that's something my husband and son were still, we were going to learn through the first.
Public library is really handy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They love teaching people.
Andy, yeah?
But you don't have a list, you can give people right here at the state.
Yeah. Duke?
Yeah. I'm gonna continue on with what Counselor Olson was talking about, after we had that in our, with the order of last meeting, I went out and reached out to a few people I knew who were very interested, concerned about it. First thing I want to say is, I don't think we need any changes up to the, the septic orders, yeah, I don't think we need any changes, we've spent a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of attorney time on that, I really feel we have a good septic order, now, the problem is, it's not being used, the key part of it, how, the big change was the the citizen, the owner being involved with it, it just got down to this mandate of every five years.
Right.
That's what the letter says, and that's what we were reading, and that's what, I still was getting phone calls, and I still do, and I'm still concerned about it myself. I think what the, since, since I get from everybody I talk to, we can manage, we own a home, we're responsible people, we can manage our and when you touched on it, we can manage ourselves, we don't need
I was happy when the state said, that should be, that could be an option, I'm like, well, that
It should be, I believe it is an option.
I may agree, that's what it is, it's just the way we've said it.
It's the way that we say it here in the city.
Right, and we don't need the formal reports to satisfy the state.
It's exactly where I'm going, and it's, it's, we can manage ourselves, I don't think we need to change our ordinance, I think what we can do is just have our staff seriously not send out those letters anymore, just stop sending them down.
I think we need to gather a little piece of information, because it says, use the chart. And what we need to know, because it'll say on that report, it's fifteen gallon tank, and it's two bath house, whatever. What you need to know is how many occupants.
That's exactly right.
And so if, if we have that information, then it's easy, like, for Pam to go, well, then that should be eleven years.
But you know, it's another level, and that, all of those things are true, but then it's usage, if you could have one person like yourself, or you could have two owning places, but they're gone half the year, they're Arizona, or you know, that kind of stuff, so that's, that's where it gets for the pumper, and need to talk to this, and well, oh, you're just here, you know. I know a lady, my neighbor, three bedroom, by herself for years, her first stage wasn't even, oh, you get ten, two more stages, she could get this up every year.
Yeah.
It's, it's just ridiculous, and it is a big burden, and as Counselor Olson was saying, like, they call it a go fund me, you know, it, it truly is, it's a cash cow to these guys, because the last part I'm gonna say, we are acting, doing city, we are having staff act as enablers, we're sending this letter out going, you need to get this done. I fought it, I still am fighting it, I'm on the bad boys list, I'm gonna stay on the bad boys list, you know, because I believe in this, and I'm, I'm willing to take it up to you, so.
Well, here's my, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, are we obligated by the septic ordinance to do an inspection every five years?
No.
No, no, no. What are we, what are our obligations?
To do it more than the minimum, and so what the ordinance says is, when you do it, you make an estimate based on the chart from OSU.
Right.
And if it's two people and you're fifteen gallon, it's like twelve years, thirteen years.
That's not, that's not being done, it's not being done at Dune City level. We're
Well, we're just following whatever they give us, they're saying five years, that goes in the file.
Well, that's, that's true, they're still coming out, it was, I feel we're still being used then as enablers.
How about this, how about if we did a public education from the city, to your point, Duke, that you don't have to do anything other than to follow this chart. So help yourself, learn about your septic system, what size is it, how many occupants do you have?
And, and at some point, you need to, to do that measurement, right, that's what that inspection, so give a baseline. You know, it's the, then yeah, then we should say, we don't touch it for twelve more years, see you in twelve years.
Yeah.
But you're right, and that was part of the above and beyond, they said, part of that's just education.
Yeah.
It doesn't physically have to be, it turned into our letter when Lila started, it had five years typed in, it became a template, just said five years, like, everything was five years, no matter what. And so you're right, we became enablers, it just, every report says five years, all the form letters said five years. But our ordinance says up to fifteen or so, whatever's on that chart.
Everything that I've looked at, and I couldn't be wrong, and I can be proven wrong easily, just by somebody that knows, that from everything that I've seen, I have not seen anywhere the state mandates that we send letters out to the public.
It was just so that we were compliant with our own ordinance?
Well, compliant with our orders, but we do have the ordinance, that's my point, we have the ordinance, it's met all of the criteria that we need to meet, that I didn't see anywhere that we're mandated to send out a get it done, out to our public.
Because see, now, now I think the damage is done, Duke, to your point.
Yeah.
The damage is already been done.
Big.
So there's, no, what I'm saying is, there's a lot of people out there who think five years.
Oh, hundred percent.
So, the generous thing to do would be to say, hey, we would like to give you some help and clarification, it's not every five years.
That's right.
It's use this chart, so that would be a good reason to send.
Or just, just get an inspection.
Send a letter out and say, here's a, here's some relief for you.
Yeah.
Here's some relief, here's a better way to look at this. We know your goal is to keep your septic system in good shape, this is how you do it. If you were under the impression that you had to do it five years, that's not so correct.
That's right.
So here's a chart, and use this, and I think we'd make a lot of progress with our citizens.
Hundred percent.
And there are folks that are like, I don't want anything to do it, I'll just pay for the service, that's fine, if you're, if you're happy to pay for it every five years, there's a lot of better safety than starting.
You know, I can do it, but I'm not gonna do it, and I, because I know people in my neighborhood, it's, it's too much, it hurts them.
Yeah.
It's just
Yeah, we have a short
I think every five years, a thousand bucks.
You know, the price has gone up on the disposal.
But it doesn't need to be done, that's the big deal.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't need to be done.
If you're running at a quarter of capacity, it's counterproductive, because you, you've got to reestablish all the bacteria.
Well, that, we talked about that years ago.
It doesn't even function for a while.
We had more fails in Dune City from the bacteria not regenerating.
Right.
So, some to think about, but it just, I really feel like, you know, when I had my labs on, that's what I felt like, they knew they had them, they had, you know.
Yeah.
I, I still want.
Well, we want to document that, if you want to be a gatting pig, measure it yourself, and say, here's what it looks like, that's the only concern, was it, are we protecting our drinking water and, and
Oh, yeah.
the neighbors, right, and so that was the original goal, and you're right, it started with a goal, because it turns into a form letter and a process.
You know, as far as having septic, and we've talked about this for years too, you can have a well, I think it's a hundred yards, a hundred feet from the thing, so the whole, the people didn't understand how septic's worked, they don't go down and drain down, it evaporates up most of the stuff, and you're, the liquid evaporates solid state behind, it doesn't get much. So it's not an issue of getting into the groundwater and moving off down, it really doesn't work that way.
One, one thing I'd like to suggest is that you're gonna have a few cases where you need hardship fund.
Oh, we're thinking about that.
Because there's people
How do we fund that overage to take care of the ones that
Yeah.
could potentially pollute, you know, and don't have the money to pump them once in a while, because we all, we have a very short list, and we were gonna reach out maybe to the state, because there's usually water wastewater funds, and a lot of forgivable loans. So they'll say, oh, we can loan to low income, if you prove up low income or hardship, it's forgivable, and because every one of these accounts fits on one piece of paper, it's not like we got a hundred of these. It's like a dozen, and everyone else has complied in the last few years, so it's just a few of them that we wonder, because we don't have any record.
A lot of people comply, and they actually complain about it all the way, but they actually lie, I'm just not complying.
And so those are easier, because we're like, well, at least we have a record, we know it was pumped seven years ago, I mean, it's not that right, but there's a few that are like, we have no history of ever, and that, you know, if you live next door, it might make you nervous. If you own a well like me.
Yeah. So, well, if it fails, that's a whole different thing.
Right.
Then, then you have a service problem.
Right.
Well, there are some that don't have real septic systems either, I know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I bet.
What do you mean, no septic system?
Wasn't designed by a professional, or
Well, but they have something.
They have something.
Do they have a tank?
No.
Do they just have a field?
Some of them don't even have a field.
Okay, and where's it going?
That's, that's my point.
Well, I mean, is it going, we're in River Hole, where's it going?
Oh, we think, well, it's
They're different, I'm just telling you, there's some that are totally, I mean, when we bought ours, it was house, it was just a French drain with holes in it that leached into the ground.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, no, it wasn't filled, it was
A fresh line. It was drain line, basically.
Yeah, and that won't function on that one for a while, if it's up.
Oh, it functions for over fifty years.
Really?
Yes.
And must have been full.
So, I'm just saying, there's some that don't have real septic systems.
Well, that's a different problem, that's entirely violating state law.
Those are the ones you have to watch out for, for, for getting into water system and things like that, because they are not a valid system.
Are these people who cannot afford to put a system in?
No, people
They can't afford to put a system in?
They just don't want to do it.
They want to fuck the system, how about that?
I see, okay.
So this sounds like one of the great episodes or events of the community, that we're trying to do all these Saturday things. Maybe a packet gets presented to counselors, and we start individually educating people up, and they say, hey, on this day, we're gonna have this event, why don't you come down? I think we need to, you know, you have good, you have good, we all are on the same page of helping people, but we look at our people that come to the, to the meetings. So we're gonna have to go up to our community folks.
Yeah, you're right, we could.
I like the idea of letters, I just, I know what you're saying, Duke.
But you know what, not everybody gets letters, I mean
I know, but the thing about it is
I'd say it's posted
There's fewer people that show up here.
Sometimes we really have the right
You gotta have some kind of outreach, so the Facebook page.
Needs to be all of them, right, they talked about that in the League of Cities, they said, make sure, if you, if you're putting on a webpage, remember all the people that don't go to your webpage, put it on the Facebook, the neighborhood Facebook, or some of those, put it in the newsletter, or, you know, make it available like four different ways.
Is that the post office?
Yeah, hang on, well, the post office.
Most people would read that and be pretty happy to read it.
I think if we did a postal, just a postal, a hundred percent, that the post office hadn't dropped one in every box in Dune City, if it was legal.
How much was that?
But, well, and there's problems with that. Yeah. What I'm getting ready to say is, we're going by Lain County resident list, not of what's accurately here.
No, no, we wouldn't have direct mail, they're just supposed to deliver it to you. We didn't put it in
Well, okay, so let me, let me be a devil's advocate on our community.
And I know the problem.
We never got things.
You didn't, because you are actually part of a Florence, I found out finally, and you are actually part of a Florence zip code. So, and then we're, so it didn't, even though you were part of the city.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
You have a different
Well, there are other people that are on Fort Way that didn't get any of their
Well, yeah, the whole Fort Way.
The whole Fort Way.
Yeah, basically that little bit, that little bit of stretch.
Yeah, did you get one? Did you get any?
I don't think I did, no. So, I don't, I, yeah, that's why I would just say
Well, the other problem
in Dune City, they drop one in every box.
Yeah.
With Westlake, is that Westlake went on to the other side of the
Right. Right.
Right, so all I can think from this, Westlake was given to the postmaster and then he put them in all the postal box boxes.
Yeah.
I don't think we should just rely on one thing, I mean, we should rely on multiple things to be the best education for our community.
This has been such a big topic for a long time, that we do a flyer or do a different letter, I think you would get from this one to that one pretty quick.
You know, a legal notice costs a lot to put in the paper, and you got to go all the way to the last two pages. But if we wrote an article, they might run it, right? They thought it was news, they'll stick it in the newspaper, because we get a lot of people reading the newspaper. If we tell them there's an educational thing and we're changing the wastewater ordinance, but we're not really changing the ordinance, we're changing the way we're approaching it.
We're educating.
That might, yeah, you could put a little educational piece in there, because newspapers have been pretty good when we have real news, they will run a story for us.
From my experience.
Heck, it's pretty fun.
The times we ever put anything about septic ordinance, we filled this place up.